Yeah, you don't show up. You were skiing, right? Killing me. This guy's in Mexico. This guy's in the mountains.
Where were you skiing?
Sun Valley.
Oh, I was supposed to be in Big Sky right now.
What happened?
White had some surgery.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And she, I was supposed to, the week she had the surgery, I was supposed to go to Winter Park. Detroit Mountain and the Vanquish.
It's not quite the same as Big Sky.
Really? Are you sure?
Yeah, I think you might be a little bit underwhelmed. Okay, it's five thirty. I will call to order our West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Second Order of Business, the Approval of the Minutes from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Moved to approve is electronically reproduced or digitally reproduced?
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Agenda item number three is continued, so that is pushed to next month's meeting on April tenth, twenty twenty-three. Item number four, Public Hearing, A twenty-three dash seven. Sue Cutts, Sixth Edition Replot of Lots Fifteen through Twenty of Block Twenty-Six and Part of Vacated Alley in Block Twenty-Six of Sue Cutts Third Subdivision, Four Oh Nine Cheyenne Street, City, West Fargo, North Dakota, Chromerica Enclave.
Thank you. This application was received in order to replat, to consolidate existing lots into one for redevelopment of the former bank building, Bell Bank Building property for drinking establishment. In preparation of Cheyenne Street redevelopment, a twenty-foot strip of land was originally deeded to the City of West Fargo along the west portion of the property. The applicant is proposing to redevelop the site and would like to develop an outdoor patio along the west side of the, along Cheyenne Street. As such, the City of West Fargo is giving back the four feet which wasn't used for the Cheyenne Street project, and the remaining sixteen feet would be retained by the city and dedicated as public right-of-way. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, as is a representative of the applicant.
Um, okay, thank you. So just so I'm clear, we're just moving one line over and making them all into one?
Right.
That's on the street side?
Yep, the little strip right there.
Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing, so at the, as such, I'll open it up for public comments, if there is any. Any public comment? Seeing none, close that section. Commissioners? Questions? Seems simple enough.
I just have a question about that four-foot strip of land. Can you explain that a little more? It was originally deeded from this owner to the city and is going back?
So Bell Bank had, had given twenty feet along the west side to the City of West Fargo for the Cheyenne Street project.
Right.
Um, and now it's been determined that the city doesn't need all of it, so they're giving back four feet along this section of the street.
So it's going back to that original owner?
So, yep, the, of the twenty feet, sixteen feet is going to right-of-way, and then four feet will go to the property owner or the new property owner, once, once the plat's recorded.
And there was, there was no payment for that at any point? It was just deeded over and they'll be deeded back?
Yep, I can provide some additional context there. Um, so back when the Cheyenne Street project was underway, uh, it was determined there was some need for some additional right-of-way. And I believe at the time, um, and Tim with Enclave can maybe fill in some of the details from a couple of years back, but there was a, a project proposal kind of in the works for this, the Bell Bank property, to, to redevelop that, um, that property into a mixed-use building. Uh, there was some thought at the time in the preliminary design of that building that, um, it would be good to have some kind of activation or some street activation space there. And so, um, in order to kind of accommodate potential, um, you know, right-of-way enhancements or sidewalk enhancements, if you will, uh, twenty feet of land was deeded to the City of West Fargo, um, not really knowing what that final design of the street was, since the design process was kind of in process at the time, um, with the, the idea that the city would use what is needed for the, you know, street right-of-way design and then give back whatever is left over. And so, in essence, what we're doing here with this plat is we're just, it's been determined that now that the street infrastructure is in, um, out of the twenty feet that was originally given, you know, sixteen feet is needed for the right-of-way, and then the remaining four feet can be given back to the original, um, um, property that it was originally taken from, if you will, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application. Um, we're learning conditions. With the one condition? Um, uh, before vote, any other questions or discussion required? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number five, Public Hearing, A twenty-three dash nine, Brooks Harbor Tenth Edition, a replat of Lot One, Block Two of Brooks Harbor First Edition, City, West Fargo, North Dakota, Graham.
All right, thank you and good afternoon. So this item, item five, uh, Brooks Harbor Tenth Edition. This is a request for a subdivision for the purpose of replating the property in, from one lot into two lots. And then similar to the last application, also dedicating a small strip of land, uh, that the city owns, dedicating that as public right-of-way for, for Cheyenne Street. Um, the subdivision plat also includes the creation of a, I believe it's a forty-foot wide, uh, private access and you, private drive and utility easement, which would run north-south along, um, the, the block. Uh, the idea there is to provide some, um, a joint connection for the two lot owners on the west and east. Uh, you may, um, or recently, I should say, the, uh, the applicant has come through, uh, the City Commission approval process in order to open up an access point onto Twenty-S sixth Avenue, uh, which would be in, in access controlled, um, right-of-way, it being Twenty-S sixth Avenue being classified as a collector's street, and then Cheyenne Street being classified as an arterial street. There are some, um, driveway protections along those two, two streets. And so, um, the recommendation for you today is to approve the subdivision plat as presented, uh, with the condition that, uh, the developer provides a subdivision developer agreement prior to final plat approval. What we're looking for in terms of that subdivision developer agreement is just some, um, language from the, the applicant specifying how the private drive, that shared private drive will be maintained into the long term. The city has had some issues in the past, um, with just ensuring that private drives that the public, you know, utilizes quite a bit. Uh, when they do fall into disrepair, it's, it's tough to, uh, uh, get the property owner to, to maintain them. And so, uh, we would like to, uh, enter into agreement with the developer just to outline the terms of how that property will be, or how that private drive, uh, will be maintained in perpetuity, um, because like anything else, it needs to be maintained even if it's thirty years from today. Um, additionally, with the access point on the south side on the Twenty-S sixth Avenue, when the City Commission approved that access point, that approval was conditioned, um, was a conditional approval, uh, basically outlining two options. Option one, it'd be a right-in, right-out with some specific geometric design of the driveway uh, to restrict, um, full access to that interchange. Uh, the situation there is especially, um, especially an issue during rush hour times when, when traffic gets backed up along Twenty-S sixth Avenue, uh, people, folks waiting at the light to get onto, uh, northbound Cheyenne Street. Um, option two would be to work with the City Engineering Department on potential reconfiguration, um, of Twenty-S sixth Avenue itself, um, which would be a, a public improvement process, a project and would have its own kind of process steps involved. So with that, again, the recommendation is to approve the subdivision, um, the preliminary plat with the condition that a subdivision developer agreement, um, be finalized prior to that final plat approval by the City Commission. Uh, with that, I believe Matt Prochniak is present. Should you have any questions for the applicant, otherwise I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for staff. Uh, this is a public hearing as well.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, so I'll open that portion of the discussion up. Is there any comment or discussion, questions from the public on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close that. Commissioners?
I had a question about notification of property owners. I'm seeing that legal notices were published in the forum and notices sent to agencies and departments, but property owners within a certain area didn't need to be notified?
Not for subdivision plats, no. The, the letters go out typically for, and you see, help me out, but rezonings and I think conditional use permits.
So it's not rezoning?
Yep, there's no zone change involved here. It's already zoned like commercial and would remain as such.
And I got a question. Um, you talked about the private drive going through the middle of this. Appreciate the comments there. And maybe this is off-topic a little bit, but at what point does the, you know, can the developer request that to be a public drive? And how does that process work, I guess, given the complications of private drives, I guess?
Yeah. Um, so I guess at any point in time, the developer could request that it be a public street. Uh, typically that would take place as part of a replat process, and we would be looking for them to dedicate, you know, the full, I believe, eighty feet of, of right-of-way required, that the subdivision requires for commercial development. Um, in this case, I don't believe they had any interest in making it a public street.
And if the, if the applicant makes that request via a plat, I guess the city can review the plat and decide whether they want to take on the public infrastructure or not?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, the replat would just come here again.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Seems pretty straightforward to me. I guess I'd move to approve with the one condition noted.
All second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the application as presented with the one recommendation. Any further discussion or questions before we go to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number six on the agenda, A twenty-three dash six, Cost Fourth Edition Retrasment Plot, Lot Com, Combination of Lots One through Four, Block One of Cost Second, City, West Fargo, North Dakota, RR Refrigeration.
Cost.
Cost. Cost. I knew a guy named Cos. He said cast. Post. Sorry. Don't have the proper accent.
This application was received in order to accommodate the combining of four lots into one for future development or additional shop space at some point. Property owners wishing to combine properties which have been previously platted for building across lot lines and/or increasing lot area to address district requirements may submit a retracement plat, provided conditions are met. The proposed retracement plat will not affect the property or the use. The retracement plat will be given a subdivision name with a lot and block number. With retracement plats, there are no street right-of-way dedication or park dedication requirements. Notices were sent to city departments and applicable agencies, and the only comment was the building administrator indicated that the proposed lot combined would keep the buildings in compliance with the building code. Um, it is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances. This is not a public hearing. Um, I'm available to answer any questions, as is a representative of the applicant, application.
But this is not a republic hearing?
It's not a public hearing. Just combining four lots into one.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the application for the retracement plot. Uh, any questions or discussion prior to vote? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Final presentation, item number seven, Final Presentation of the Planning Needs Assessment Action Plan. Uh-oh, he's pulling up PowerPoint.
That might be easier to flip through if I can get it to work here. Maybe not. Nope. We'll stick with the PDF. All right, so item number seven is the yes, the Final Presentation of the Planning Needs Assessment Action Plan. Uh, included in your meeting packet tonight is, uh, the final version of that, that action plan, um, which really constitutes the final recommendations of the, um, planning needs assessment conducted by Placemakers LLC over the past, uh, six months or so. Um, a number of you have been involved in this process, or most of you have been involved in this process at one point or another, uh, starting, I believe, with some, uh, Zoom call, kind of working sessions back in, I think, fall of, of last year. Um, so this is kind of a culmination of a lot of different, uh, interviews and, and survey results and different things, uh, predominantly with, uh, city officials, whether that be staff, uh, city commissioners, planning and zoning commissioners, um, in order to, um, identify some of the, uh, the, the areas of greatest need for, uh, the city to, to focus its, its planning department resources, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, into the, the near future, um, based primarily on, uh, some of the different, um, I, the planning topics or different issues that have been identified through various, uh, planning studies over the years, uh, namely the West Fargo Two Point Oh Comprehensive Plan. And so the presentation today is really in follow-up to that February eighth, uh, joint working session of the City Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, which, uh, took place virtually, and a number of you participated in, um, and then at which point these, uh, recommendations were, were, uh, were discussed in a little bit more detail. For purposes of today, we did wanna, um, in follow-up to that meeting, we did wanna include it in a, kind of a public setting, include it in the, the packet here, and I think there was talk of, um, you know, once it is kind of all the way through the, the process, get it posted to our website, uh, so that it is, um, publicly available. And so with that, I, I'm gonna steal the slides from Placemakers here and walk through at a high level, uh, what the, the action plan includes, and certainly invite any, you know, questions or, or com, additional comments that you have along the way. Uh, this isn't meant to be overly formal by any means, and so, um, you know, please do feel free to, to interrupt me as I go. Before I get started, I did add one slide here, uh, just to provide a little bit of, I think, helpful framework to the discussion. Um, kind of four main points just to be thinking about as, as I talk through some of these, these elements and, um, or this, this, uh, action plan, I should say. Uh, first of all, I'd say all these projects are interconnected in one way or another. Uh, as you read the, the action plan, you know, hopefully that's pretty apparent that, you know, what you do with one thing certainly impacts another thing. Um, as we go through and we, um, take, uh, you know, some action steps, uh, those action steps can in turn inform some of the other recommended action steps, for example. Additionally, you know, these, uh, you know, projects that are identified are not, you know, not take place in silos. One decision always affects another. You all know that as planning and zoning commissioners, kind of the, the, uh, interconnectivity of, of these types of development decisions. Uh, second bullet point there, uh, the projects included in this plan, uh, include things like studies, activities, process changes, communications. So it's not really a one-size-fits-all. These aren't all, um, uh, you know, studies per se. And so we'll call them projects as kind of a general umbrella term, um, but they, they are, um, different in, in the way that they may be carried out or the different stakeholders and, and different folks that would be involved in any one thing. Uh, the third bullet point there, these, uh, projects are interdepartmental, and they will have various levels of involvement by any, any one stakeholder, and that includes the planning department. Uh, you will see projects included in this plan that the planning department would not be, you know, taking an active role in, in, in leading, for example, but, you know, certainly the planning department or the planning commission may have some, you know, input in that process, for example. Uh, the consultant did try and include anything and everything that was kind of a major topic of discussion, uh, throughout the various discussions, um, as they were putting this together. Uh, so I do wanna highlight that. Uh, lastly, uh, this was a big point of discussion too, is I wanna emphasize that the timelines included are not set in stone. Um, really the important thing to be focusing on here, the way that I, I think myself and other staff are looking at this, is, um, the prioritization of these process, um, projects are, is the focus here. And so the plan, the action plan itself, um, breaks these projects up into three categories, three buckets, if you will, short-term, midterm, and long-term. And I would add that, you know, maybe outside of the short-term recommendations, within each category, I don't know that there's any, you know, specific order to those, and so just because things are listed in, you know, a certain order does not mean that that's, you know, a, a prioritized order. I think what they saw throughout the discussion was depending upon which group of stakeholders they were talking to, you know, they would get a, a totally different response on kind of the order of some of these things. And so at the end of the day, the three categories is kind of where, uh, the consultant landed with these. And so this is intended to be, um, you know, sort of a living document, not necessarily that we'll be updating the document per se, but more of a living discussion. As I, I've kind of said, I think throughout this process, the intention here is, uh, planning staff would utilize, uh, the results of this study to inform, you know, our work plan as we, uh, develop it from year to year, and as that relates to different, you know, budget requests for some of these projects, because you'll see some of these projects can be done in-house, while others may require the help or some assistance from outside consultants, for example. Uh, the projects vary in, in scope and scale, um, quite a bit. Uh, so that's, that's the overall intent here and, and to kind of, um, bring everybody along through that discussion in order to get, um, some consensus as best we can on, um, kind of the order of, of operations here as we look to move, uh, West Fargo forward, um, in a number of different exciting directions, again, that, that are all kind of, kind of come back to the West Fargo Two Point Oh Comprehensive Plan, you know, in, in essence, right at its base, so. Uh, without kind of overarching framework, I'll, I'll dive into just a, a quick summary of the identified topics. So we'll start with the short-term, uh, recommendations here, the short-term projects, uh, which includes the downtown master plan, subtitle four amendments, lagoon strategy, economic development strategy, and then some capital improvement, uh, tweaks, we'll call them. So starting with the, the downtown master plan, um, this is one that is, um, currently initiated. Uh, as you all know, we did, uh, the City of West Fargo did put out an RFP, uh, for a consultant to conduct a, to help the city, uh, develop a down, an updated downtown master plan. Um, our hope is that we can have an update for this commission here next month. Um, so, uh, I'll maybe leave it at that for now, uh, but this one is kind of, uh, in the early stages of, of getting kicked off. Uh, the RFP, uh, did include a project timeline, and I don't wanna, you know, rehash old discussions. But, uh, just as a quick reminder, uh, the city did receive a one hundred thousand dollar placemaking grant, uh, which is really kind of the, uh, the catalyst for kicking off this project, kind of ahead of the completion of this, um, this planning needs assessment, um, uh, for example. So anyhow, I will have a, an update for you, um, on this one next month. Um, just know that, 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 uh, that process is well underway in terms of identifying, uh, a consultant to, to help with this, this project. Uh, the next one, next project here is the Title Four Text Amendments. Um, this is really intended to be some of the, you know, the low-hanging fruit, if you will, things that, uh, staff can take a look at internally, or if the, the Planning and Zoning Commission has, you know, specific little tweaks that, that you feel are, are necessary to make. Kind of a, you might refer to it as a Band-Aid approach to our, our current code. Until we, you know, get to a point where we do some type of a comprehensive rewrite to our, our development code, um, some small tweaks here and there will, will get us by in the, in the short term. And some of those tweaks and recommendations, um, you know, there certainly are, I think, recommendations that we, that we have from, from past, past efforts, as well as, you know, we're likely to, to see more of those recommendations come out of things like a downtown town master plan, for example. Um, included here, they do have some finding if, if we would like to utilize, um, you know, the aid of a consultant for some of the, the larger lifts, for example. They do have, um, some general price ranges. Um, we asked them to give us some ballpark figures, just, um, uh, for the short-term projects at least. Uh, next project listed is the Lagoon Strategy and Plan. For this one here, as you, I think, are all aware, the city is currently in the process of decommissioning, uh, the sewage lagoons. Now that, uh, we've entered into agreement with the City of Fargo to, to take, uh, sewage. And so the question has come up, what does the city do with this land now that it's being decommissioned? And this was identified as a, a short-term, uh, need, you know, although the, the lagoons are still in the process of being decommissioned, um, the city should take some steps to figure out what the, once they are decommissioned, how, what's the best way to utilize that land? Uh, here, the consultant recommended, uh, that the city go through a request for expressions of interest process, um, basically asking for ideas from, uh, the private sector on, you know, the city has this, this chunk of land. What would you propose that we do with it? Based on the responses that we would get, um, the city could kind of take any of those recommendations under advisement or potentially partner with one of the, uh, submitters of the idea to, to further, you know, evaluate or, or flesh out, um, some of those ideas that, that are, uh, proposed as part of that process. Uh, the consultant did outline kind of a continuum of three different options that should be included as part of that request for expressions of interest. Uh, kind of on one end of the spectrum, uh, the city could just sell the land outright, uh, to, to be developed. That's kind of the, the simple approach. Uh, kind of the middle approach is a P-three or a public-private partnership, where the city would actually partner with, uh, the private sector in order to, uh, uh, develop the land or develop a project. Uh, then on the, kind of the, the other end of the spectrum is the city becomes a master developer and actually hires, you know, um, a developer, a development team, um, to help the city actually develop and, um, you know, sell off the, the land once developed or in pieces, if you will. So that's, that's kind of the, uh, approach recommended for the lagoon strategy. Uh, it is anticipated that this discussion would be kicking off at some point this year. This discussion would, um, initiate, I think, with the administration, uh, with conversations with planning, engineering, public works, economic development, and, and I'm sure a few others in terms of, um, what those different elements might be included, or what different, uh, yeah, different elements might be included in that discussion, and then ultimately bringing that through to the City Commission for, um, kind of, uh, the green light to, to go forward in, in a direction.
Am I the only one who saw the area and you're considering that to be a floating zone?
(laugh) And that was, uh, yeah, on that note, um, another kind of sub-recommendation within the lagoon strategy was, you know, the city could potentially create, uh, what they refer to as a floating zone, which is just a way of saying, create a, a unique zoning district for this area that could in the future be applied to this area. We'll just kind of have it in our back pocket if and when it's needed, um, in the, in the future.
You knew that was a floating zone.
Next project is the Economic Development Strategy. This one again is, uh, is one that economic development staff would be taking the lead in. Uh, this is something that could potentially be done in-house, uh, here, again, using West Fargo Two Point Oh as, as general guidance. Uh, but certainly there are, you know, various aspects to something like, uh, a strategy, depending upon how in-depth you'd like to get, where we could, um, hire out some work to do some more in-depth market studies, uh, with, uh, you know, various firms that have those, uh, particular skill sets. Uh, here again, this is something that, you know, relates to the other projects as we, as we look to, um, you know, do other things. There might be elements to different projects that involve things like market studies that could help inform kind of a, an overall city, uh, economic development, um, strategy update, for example. And then the capital improvement planning, um, this is something that the city already does, uh, predominantly led by engineering and public works, again. Um, but I think the emphasis here is just recognizing that there are some additional opportunities, um, through, uh, some of the various recent, uh, federal, uh, transportation legislation and different things where there are a number of different, and, and new grant opportunities that, uh, may be available in the near future that, uh, haven't been available in the past, and, and the city would, it would be in the city's best, best interest to be kind of prepared for and looking for those opportunities, um, if and when they, they come along, uh, to help inform our, our, you know, current, uh, capital improvement, uh, planning process. So that's the, the short-term projects in a nutshell. Uh, next are the midterm projects. Starting with a, a sign code update, uh, the main issue with our, our sign code right now is that there was a, a recent Supreme Court case that, uh, there was a recent Supreme Court case that basically affects probably ninety-some-odd percentage of sign codes in the country, having to do with content neutrality of signs. And so, the recommendation here is to update our sign code to be compliant with some of the more recent Supreme Court cases. And then, also, it's an opportunity to, you know, clean up and modify our sign code more generally, make it more user-friendly, things like graphics and whatnot. This is something that city staff started to work with placemakers on through an existing contract that the city has with them. That process was kind of put on hold a year or two ago, and so, it's kind of ready to be picked back up, if you will, if and when the city is ready to do so. So, they do have some draft language that they've worked on, that's kind of ready for some additional vetting, if you will. Next one here is just increased coordination for space management. I'd say this is less of a project and more of a, just, you know, inserting this topic into just the day-to-day business of City Hall in general. There's a number of different topics that came up through conversations. The fact that, as the city grows, for example, the fire department is going to be, you know, looking for opportunities for fire stations. And as the city grows, there's just need for expansion of city services, and so, being aware of the space needs that are so closely tied with city growth, for example. The city commission is currently in the process of evaluating some of the space needs with City Hall. The library is currently renting space from the school district, and in need of some attention as well, in terms of some of their facilities. And so, just recognizing that there's kind of a lot, a whole lot of different, you know, conversations that might be happening, you know, sometimes in a little bit, maybe too much of isolation, and so, just recognizing those opportunities to potentially partner with partner entities, and just to, overall, have some additional coordination. And I think this, too, which I'll talk about in a moment here, is the future growth area master plan. As we look to plan for the future growth area of the city of West Fargo, it's important to be coordinated with our partner entities, whether it's the school district or park district, who also have their own, you know, long-term planning needs. And so, as much as we can, you know, be being aware of the various needs and partner agencies out there that we can be potentially collaborating with as we look at different projects here. Specific corridor infrastructure or utility servicing plans. This one was a little bit of a, I think, a catch-all category, and it does tie very closely in with the capital improvement planning aspect. I'd say this, too, also relates to a lot of the work that MetroCog does, for example, whether they're looking at, you know, specific corridor studies for the purpose of future funding. I think there is some opportunity for the city to take some active looks, some active planning, if you will, on some of the future infrastructure and corridor needs, which, again, also ties into things like future growth area master planning. Looking at the utility, long-term utility servicing is closely tied to land use tying, land use planning is closely tied to future transportation planning. So, making sure that all those elements are coordinated amongst the various stakeholders. So, the growth area master plan, which I just talked about there, recognizing, again, that the city is pretty well-built out in terms of its current corporate boundaries. Most of the area outside of the city is within the floodplain. However, with the FM diversion project, that future growth area will someday likely be out of the floodplain. And so, recognizing that there's a need for the city to be organized and prepared for when that day comes, because there is likely to be, you know, a certain degree of development, maybe potentially pent-up development pressure when that day comes. And so, as best as possible, the city can be ready for that day and can kind of get ahead of the demand and not be as reactive to demand as, you know, may have been the case in the past, for example. And this, too, is where the West Fargo 2.0 plan, you know, provides that overarching vision for the city, but something like a growth area master plan can start to dig into more of the details on how implementation of that plan actually looks on the ground. So, it kind of bridges that gap between the high-level vision and how do we kind of implement it? What are the specific steps that we need to take? How are we coordinating different things that various entities are doing, whether it's, or anything that the planning department's doing, whether it's updates to the development codes that are in line with the infrastructure servicing, which is in line with the, you know, proposed street network? The next project in the list for the midterm items is the unified development code. This is just a common way that municipalities kind of call their zoning and subdivision and development regulations. And really, the idea here, and I think what came up in the conversation was, one, there's a need for some updates to our zoning code based on our, you know, the adoption of the West Fargo 2.0 comprehensive plan. Typically, your zoning code is one of the primary tools that you use to implement your comprehensive plan when it comes to land use and development. Right now, we have a comprehensive plan that is newer than our zoning code. I think our zoning code are, might have been kind of last comprehensive looked at in the, you know, potentially the mid-eighties. There have been a lot of edits and additions over time, but also, over time, it becomes a little disjointed as you make those tweaks and changes, and the user-friendliness of a nineteen-eighties code is a little lacking at times as well, based on some of the modern things like technology that can be used for modern development codes, when it comes to things like the user-friendliness and just the general understanding of development regulations. Additionally, currently, we have zoning and subdivision ordinances within Title Four, whereas we have things like, you know, stormwater requirements and different, you know, street improvement requirements housed in different titles of our municipal code. And so, one of the kind of more recent best practices is, as best as possible, bring those development regulations into one kind of standardized document that's, that can kind of make those elements a little bit more, you know, fit together a little bit better than they currently do. Again, not just from the user-friendliness standpoint, but also the disjointedness that can kind of happen when you have kind of separated code elements like that. So, that's what that is. It's really a comprehensive update to the development codes overall, not just zoning, not just subdivision, but kind of all aspects of development. That is a very substantial project. They did include, you know, just some reference numbers here. If you were to hire a consultant to do something like that, $200,000 to $500,000, that's likely, you know, at minimum, probably a two-year process. And so, this is nothing, you know, nothing small, especially when you're modifying some of the zoning regulations, there's substantial, you know, public input and different things that would be necessary to talk through any potential changes, especially in relation to any sort of residential zoning districts and things, you know, with residents. And then, lastly, the long-term projects here are a little further out there, so it's a little more fuzzy when it comes to the plan itself. But things like the public arts master plan, I believe that was identified in the West Fargo 2.0 comprehensive plan. The city of West Fargo does have a public arts advisory committee as well, which is tasked with reviewing, you know, public art projects that might come through the city from time to time. Outside of that, you know, they don't really have a, you know, a specific charge or anything. And so, having a public arts plan that kind of gives them some guidance on how they can invest help the city is one recommendation there. With the, going back to the interrelatedness of these things, with the downtown master plan, the grant that the city received was specifically for placemaking, and so, placemaking is a primary element of the downtown master plan. And so, the hope is, is that the public arts advisory committee can be, you know, a very valuable stakeholder throughout that process, but also, there's some potential implementation steps that, you know, they could be charged with, for example. Next on the list is the West Fargo 2.0 update. The West Fargo 2.0 isn't that old, but it is slowly getting older every year. At some point in time, the city will need to update its comprehensive plan and kind of have another round of conversations with the community as a whole, make sure that we're all still in agreement on what the city's vision is for the future. And so, that's something that just needs to be on our radar as well. Comprehensive plans are larger projects in general, taking probably a minimum, you know, a year to, from start to finish for that effort as well. A very substantial public input process with something like a comprehensive plan as well. Mobility master plan, that's kind of specific to some of the transportation comments that came up. MetroCog, our regional transportation planning organization, you know, is very active, I mean, currently in different transportation plans. However, I think the idea here is that we could get something more customized to West Fargo, and maybe dig into, a little less focused maybe on some of the, you know, federally-funded streets and things, and a little bit more focus on, you know, the, maybe the neighborhood level on different aspects of mobility. Also, looking at multimodal mobility, things that maybe get a little less attention from some of the more traditional avenues. And then, lastly, neighborhoods and housing master plan. This is something that, again, lightly touched on in the West Fargo 2.0 comprehensive plan, but something that could certainly use more attention, especially as, you know, our core neighborhoods, for example, like any city, aren't getting any younger, and so, making sure that the city is staying on top of the needs of its existing neighborhoods, while they're still, at the same time, you know, planning for, you know, future expansions. We can't lose sight of what we have. So, those were the long-term projects. So, with that, that's kind of a, apologize, probably took a little longer than I anticipated, but an overview of the action plan itself. Some of the next steps here is, I'll present kind of a similar presentation to the city commission, again, in follow-up to that joint working session that you had with the city commissioners. And then, from there, again, hoping to utilize this document as we, as we put together our kind of plans of action going forward, and as we enter the next budget cycle, will be the 2024 budget cycle, looking at, you know, some of those short-term projects here. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Why do you look at me?
Because you always have questions.
I know I do. And I do my homework, I'm a professor.
That's okay, let's go.
Well, I do have a couple. And first, I just want to commend you, because I think doing this whole document with all these moving pieces would have made my head explode. So, I have to congratulate you and the staff on doing this. It's just, it really is a monumental task, so my appreciation to that. I did have a couple of things I just wanted to hear a little bit more about. One is, I see things through here that make my heart glad. So, you know, if you read enough, you find them. They're not necessarily prominent because of maybe the chronological order that you've taken this in short-term versus. But I did see them. There was, for example, buried under the uniform development code is the, is a great paragraph about communities and what people want to see in communities, that they want to see investing in schools, transportation choice, walkability, all kinds of amenities. And they, people see that as strengthening the economy, and yet, there really isn't a lot around that. It's more in the long-term that we kind of get to some of that with the public art stuff. And so, for the libraries in there in the midterm, and, you know, I'm thinking, also, if you look at the snapshot of who lives in West Fargo, we're a very educated population, much more than the state, and I think nationally. So, you've got a population, a professional population, et cetera. We don't have higher education opportunities. We don't have, you know, lectures. We don't have auditorium for lectures. Our library's behind the times. We probably could use more theater, more music venues, and so forth. So, it's kind of like you have to really wait to get to that stuff. Public art is a great start, but it's really just one piece of that whole notion of the amenities that people are looking for in a community. And do we really know, you know, why people come here, why they select us? Would they come here if we had other amenities? I realize this isn't for this particular document, but more as a context for the philosophy you're taking into planning, and how this kind of stuff that's buried in there, it really seems to kind of counter or contradict the short-term priorities, which are very thing-oriented, and I understand you really need to get that structure in place and so forth. Any thoughts about how to reconcile that and bring those kinds of community amenities to the fore a little more?
Yeah, I can try and answer it as best I can, and you might need to help guide me if I go too far astray here on your question. But I think I will say, again, I'll have an update for the commission next month in regards to the downtown master plan, but I think that's, you know, maybe the most immediate opportunity for the city to have some of those conversations. You know, you name things like, you know, theater and different things, and those, you know, some of those examples might be, you know, prime opportunities for a downtown environment. And so, something like a downtown master plan, you know, through the public engagement piece of that effort, I think that's maybe a great opportunity to dig into some of those, you know, demands, maybe that the public might have for new and different things. And so, like I said before, all this is, you know, very interconnected, and, you know, although we might not be digging into, you know, exactly that right now, I'd say the, you know, the underlying philosophy, I think, always goes back to the comprehensive plan in my mind. You know, that's really the guiding document, that's the overarching vision for the city. And so, yeah, I think, I don't know if I'm answering your question or not, but...
No, I did. I mean, it's helpful to realize or to consider that these things can be woven in it all along the way, even beginning with that and with that, with community engagement, enabling those kinds of things to bubble up, and I hope that that happens. So, the second part was about, and this is not meant to be kind of a gotcha, but have you looked at this in terms of its age-friendly application? Does this advance us toward making our community a good place for all ages? You know, I see the housing and transportation are, you know, quite far down the road, and we're looking at MetroCog to really take a lead on that, but I'm not sure that that's sufficient for West Fargo. Have you looked at it in terms of its age-friendliness and whether this is going to move us towards something like that?
Yeah. That's a good question, too. And there, again, I'd kind of go back to the, the 2.0 comprehensive plan does speak to that specifically. And I think with any of these efforts, you know, I think that the comprehensive plan and any, you know, recent planning that the city has done is really the starting point or the launching point for those efforts. And so, for example, when the downtown master plan, you know, does kick off, you know, the team that would be helping with that, they would kind of be putting together a foundation based on what the city has, what the public has expressed through these existing planning processes, and then, kind of inserting those findings into the process going forward. And so, if there is a recommendation in the 2.0 comprehensive plan about, you know, wanting to be an age-friendly place, that should be part of the discussion throughout the development of a downtown master plan. Another example is the, MetroCog is currently working on a metro-wide housing study, and I know, you know, aging in place is a big element to that, and that was a huge component to those discussions, and I think that'll be, you know, publicly released here in the, fairly soon, I should say. And so, I think you will see, you know, different elements such as that with, kind of woven within, you know, specific, your topic-specific plans and different things. And so, although we might not be doing, you know, a specific age-friendly, you know, project, I think it is kind of baked into the various elements here. At least, that's the intention. Again, going back to the West Fargo 2.0 plan, you know, all of these things are really trying to advance that vision. And so, we should be incorporating all of the different various recommendations of the comprehensive plan in anything that we, that we're doing.
And just, I'll...
At least that's the intention. Again, going back to the West Fargo 2.0 Plan, you know, all of these things are really trying to advance that vision. And so we should be incorporating all of the different various recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan in anything that we, that we're doing.
And, and just, I'll, I'll end with this. I'm just making a connection here about what kind of, you know, growth we might be looking for and who it is we're trying to attract to the community and what kind of housing would be available and amenities and so forth. And thinking about the fact that we, I, I'm guessing that we are a kind of a destination for retirees from other parts of the state. And so the age-friendliness becomes important and also the kind of housing available. I, I don't know if MetroCog is really cognizant of that, but if we're concerned about density, high-density housing, you're more likely to find that that's an appropriate kind of housing for older people, retirees. And that really meets some of the goals here of higher-density housing rather than the sprawl that we've seen for, what do we call those up-and-coming, up-and-coming families was a, a word used in one of the, one of the slides there. So just to, to maybe solidify this idea that this is not just a place for up-and-coming families, but it is a place for retirees. And that requires a lens to be looking at some of these things and how they apply. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the questions.
Okay, I'm done.
You said some interesting things there. And I, I think a huge benefit to this city has been the Rust Ed Center. And if you see the geezers there playing pickleball every morning.
You call me a geezer?
Yeah, I am. That's implied.
Yourself included.
You should infer that. And, and, and going off what you talked about, theater or a lecture series, I mean, if, if, if that's what the city wants, that would be a place to start that, you know? And I see you're getting off this commission, so I got a project for you. I mean, there's rooms in the Rust Ed Center that we could, you know, we could start having a lecture series. If we can find some people to come in there and speak. And I, I think it would be a great draw. And if, if that thing would start packing houses, that's a way to build off of that. But I think, I think that place would be a great, you know, venue to start something like that.
They do charge for the rooms, so it's, you know, you have to build that into a budget.
I wouldn't think it's that much. And maybe, you know, the planning commission can say, could you give her a deal, please? Because I mean...
Clark's on that one.
Yeah. So I mean, I, it's, I mean, those are great, great pods. But we're kicking Fargo's arse with that thing, because they're trying to catch up right now with one of those buildings. All they're worried about is golf courses. And West Fargo is actually serving the community with that thing. It's amazing. It's amazing.
Excellent. Yes, very good. Good summation. We're hitting a lot of the points of overall plan with the specific projects that we've identified. Sure, there's a few pieces that we haven't covered, but we're getting a lot of it. And, and it's good to have a little bit of a, a longer-term vision as far as where are we going to go next, so that we can be thinking about what, what to improve first and next. But I am not, I'll, I'll, I'm not looking forward to the signs. I'll tell you that now.
I dream of volunteering beyond that committee.
I am not looking forward to signs. That was, that, that is going to be a struggle. I, I do have one other question. The Unified Zoning Project. Have other communities in the area done something similar to their zoning as they have, you know, developed their plans?
Yeah, I, I believe Horace has recently gone through, you know, kind of a different science community, but I believe they've just updated, did some type of update to their zoning code. I can tell you that the city of Fargo recently did a, what they call the Land Development Code Diagnostic, where they kind of took a first step towards a, a comprehensive update. Kind of doing an audit of their current code, what's, what the issues are, and then kind of laying out a menu of options. You know, do we keep our code, make strategic tweaks? Do we get rid of the code entirely? You know, develop something from scratch. And so the recommendation from that, that effort was that this, the Fargo City Commission anyway, was interested in pursuing a comprehensive update to their development regulations. I know they are, they are currently working on a growth plan right now. And so I think that's kind of their, their main focus, but it, it wouldn't surprise me if in the near future they are, are looking at a comprehensive update to their, their codes. Their current zoning code was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, so it is a little bit newer than ours as well.
Last updated one.
I don't know, John, if you have any idea when the... Best guess is the mid-eighties was kind of the last time it was comprehensively looked at. I think there are elements that date back to the, the founding of West Fargo, but...
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
So item eight, non-agenda. So this is Rock House's last meeting. Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
We're going to try. Any other non-agenda items? Then...
Move to adjourn.
Move. Second, anybody? Moving to second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You had to go with the poopy, the poopy jokes, right?